I'll to order the Town Hall Old Sabre Zoning Commission Regular and Hybrid Meeting of Monday, June 5th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall First Floor Conference Room at 302 Main Street, Old Sabre. Peter, tonight, it's me, Bob Friedman, Chair, Mark Calderella, Vice Chair, Regular Commission Members Mark D'Amico and Ambery Thorson. Jerry Lewis is absent.
He's online.
Online, okay. And also present in the room, we have our Alt. John Henry, Clerk Joanne Galley, our zoning enforcement officers, will be back shortly. And we have three people in the room, and including Jerry Lewis, six online, four. All right, four online. Next up, minutes of our previous meeting that was May 15th. Any additions or corrections to the minutes of Monday, May 15?
I did not see any.
Great job as usual, Clerk Joanne Galley. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of Monday, May 15th, zoning commission meeting as presented.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry.
Here I am. I can't get the video going, so sorry about that.
A discussion on the motion to approve the minutes of May 15th, none appearing. While those in favor of the motion to approve the minutes presented, signify by saying aye.
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 There were five. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that I watched the previous minutes of the last minute, all two hours, two hours and 53 minutes of them.
So one qualified to.
All right, Mark D'Amico has listened to the recording of the May 15th meeting. And for any agenda items this evening, he has stated that he's qualified, prepared for deliberations. Next on the agenda is correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
None.
Next up is Continued Public Hearing, item 8, Old Glory, Application for Special Exception and Coastal Site Plan Review to Construct a 1,055 square foot addition and 148 square foot enclosed entry to the existing 3,280 square foot retail store and demolish the second building at 1804 Boston Post Road, Association Map 17 Lot 4, in the gateway business peaceway district and coastal area management zone. Applicant is Glenn Morelli, Agent Attorney, David Royston. Mr. Royston.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I hope you hear me. I'm able to hear you and see you. And this application on May 15th, you were presented with the revised plans to address the comments of the Jeff Jacobson letter of May 15, 2023. There were a few items which remained to be done. They were put into those plans which you received. The Commission felt that they had received a lot of information and that it would be appropriate to continue the meeting to this meeting in order for the Commission to be able to look at the materials, digest them, and be prepared to act upon the application at this meeting. After this material was presented to the Commission, it was also forwarded to Jeff Jacobson. And he provided a subsequent letter dated May 23rd, in which the substance of that letter was that the items had been addressed. And let me go through with what I think were the open items and how they have been addressed in this application. The, one of the first items he mentioned was that in the May 15th letter was a concern about the sideline distance to the adjacent property. In the original plans, it was 17.5 feet, which was less than the building being demolished. But the question was, well, if you demolish that building, you now have the new building being within the setback. In order to resolve that issue, the new building was decreased in size by two and a half feet in order that it be within the side yard setback. So the plans that you have as revised through June 7th essentially have made that, made that correction so that the building is 20 feet from the, from the sideline. Another question which arose was the question of the meeting FEMA requirement because a portion of the property was within the flood zone. And that being the case, the entire building would be subject to FEMA. And Jeff Jacobson had suggested a number of remedies to that, one of which would be to apply for a map amendment to take the property out of the flood zone. If you take a look at the survey of the property and all the spot elevations on that, that survey, the property is not within the flood zone. And therefore, there would be no need to create some sort of a ramp in order to raise the elevation of the interior floor. So that is the option which the applicant is choosing to receive. And the applicant understands that there's two different permits required. One is the zoning compliance permit, and the other one will be the flood permit. And we will not be able to proceed until we get the flood permit, even if you approve this application, which you hope to do tonight. So that is, we're in the process of getting a map amendment, which merely requires that we confirm by a survey that the property is in fact outside of the flood zone. And so we expect to be able to receive that permit and the map amendment, and therefore receive the flood, flood permit. The other items were the question which you considered as to the parking in front of the building and whether it ought to be angled, which would reduce the number of spaces in order to put a sidewalk onto the, onto this property. And it was, as we understood it, the consensus of the Commission, not to reduce the parking in front, that there was going to be a sidewalk on the north side already under a steep grant, so that it would be unnecessary to put a sidewalk on this part of the property. And Jeff Jacobson in his May 23rd letter says, I don't recommend that there be a sidewalk there. The other item which has been raised is that the plan as revised shows the six spaces in the rear of the property and that there be a one-way-in on the west side of the property to reach the spaces in the, in the rear. And that there be signs marking one-way-in, that's been done. You aren't going to be able to mark the pavement with an arrow because it has its gravel. But it's proposed that there be a sign on the rear of the building, which basically directs those persons who may be parking in the rear to exit to the east and out to the post road in, in that direction. The, early on, Jeff said that the Commission ought to have an easement, the easement, the language of the easement, to confirm that the applicant had the right to do the, the work that was proposed to be done on the plan, which had some landscaping encroachment upon the lot to the rear. And that easement has been provided for your records, which essentially provides to the owner of the property at 1804, which is Glenn Morelli, to do landscaping on the, the front of the 20-foot setback of the property to the, to the rear. And that's shown on the, shown on the plan. Also, the original statement of use had indicated that the applicant would reserve the right to have expanded hours for high-volume holidays such as Black Friday. And as the Commission, Commission Chair noted, that all that, although it had been allowed in the past, that the Commission was not prepared to grant that sort of a right. And so we amended the statement of use to say that any increase in the hours would require consent by the Commission. And an application for that consent would have to be done through the zoning enforcement officer. So the Commission itself would have the right to say yea or nay. So there's a, there should be a block, signature block on the, the final amendment to the plans. And I think that takes care of the, the items of concern addressed by the Commission and by Jeff Jacobson as its consultant. And with those changes, we would request that the application be granted. I think Joe Wren is on the Zoom. And basically, he's there for the purpose of answering any questions which the, the Commission may, may have on this, on this matter. Thank you.
Let's see. The stated hours of operation in the statement of use are numbers on a clock? Do we have that? It says normal, in the original, it said normal business hours will be 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And then in addition to that, your revised statement of use as, as what?
Says that any change from those hours for high-volume days such as Black Friday or over some Christmas days, the applicant would have to apply to the Commission for a permission to have hours beyond those, which are the regular business hours.
Okay, that's right. That's, that's how it's supposed to work, right?
And that, and we filed an amendment, amended statement of use, which states that. That's been filed for the, for the record.
Okay. And, Mary, have any questions?
No.
The square footage issue is handled to, to the satisfaction of the Commission, I believe. There was one, one question regarding the curbing in front of the building. There's, within the footprint of the existing building, it says the install curve to match existing. Is that, that's lined up to a black dot in the middle of a tree? And I hope that that implies that it's, it's a whole landscaped area where curbing would be installed to match existing, not just the tree where the black dot is?
Joe, can you answer that question, please?
Yes. For the record, Joe Wren, I believe that call out on the right-hand side of the plan says new curved landscape area with shrubs to match existing. So we're pointing to the landscaped area with curbing and not just a curbing. Is that?
On the other side, the proposed vestibule entryway, then the black dot is in the middle of a landscaped area, and it's a landscaped area. But that one's in the middle of a tree. We just didn't want to make, I just want to make sure that we weren't losing the tree to curbing at that point.
That one, that call out points to the existing landscape, curved landscaped area? And the other one says, add this proposed curved landscape area to match that existing one?
All right. Any questions? This is a public hearing, right? Yes, a continued public hearing. Is there anyone present in the room? Well, four people online along seven that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this application? None appearing? Any further questions?
I have one question. The drawing that we have in front of us shows head-on parking. Discussion was about 90-degree parking. What is, for clarity, what is the parking to be in the front of the building?
Right. That was, that was going to become an item of discussion there. Jeff Jacobson had earlier proposed that there be angle parking on the street side of the building in order to provide a sidewalk along the front of the building for pedestrians as a provision for safety from those going from their cars into the, the entry. The resulting layout change made parking one-way angled in order to comply with other regulations. And therefore, sidewalk along the street was less feasible. It reduced the parking at that point by one, but they were adding another space in the rear of the property so that there was no overall change in the total number of parking spaces on the site. So contrary to what Mr. Royston said, it didn't reduce the parking overall, only in, in the front of the building. If, in that discussion, it's my recollection that the Commission determined that the existing perpendicular to the building parking without a sidewalk between the car and the building, there would be landscaping in addition to the new entryway. But there would be no sidewalk between the building and the perpendicular, the perpendicular parked cars at that point. The perpendicular cars then have space for backing up on-site without crossing into the right-of-way and then navigating their exit from that point. The downfall, the downside of that is that pedestrian sidewalk along Route 1 at that point becomes impractical because there'll be cars backing up. That stems from the previously existing non-conforming curb cut that extends the length of the property for practical purposes. And so that non-conformity doesn't appear to be easily modified to conform to present regulations because of the combination of features between the building and the right-of-way. So the Commission had related to the applicant that Jeff Jacobson's earlier angled parking was not the best, that the Commission had indicated that the, as Mr. Jacobson says in his May 23rd letter on page 2, under 2E, that it's a commission would like to maintain the 90-degree parking, he would not recommend requiring a sidewalk. And I think the Commission had expressed maintaining the 90-degree parking the way it is today.
Yes.
So if, if you think Mr. Jacobson's proposed angle parking and one-way-in, one-way-out to more better-defined curb cuts would work better, then now you think that would work better?
No, not necessarily. I just need clarification as to what type of parking will be in the front of the building. Because in, in Mr. Jacobson's letter, he's referring to the Commission preferring the angled parking, but yet on the print, it's different. So if the print is correct, I don't have an issue. If it's angle parking, the print should show the angle parking.
Well, it's up to the Commission to make a determination based on what achieves the compliance to the, to the best outcome. And the Commission has the authority to modify the special exception application to do that. And so, yes, if it's time, if you wish to revisit the topic and emphasize that the angle parking is better, we can still do that. Earlier, we indicated to the applicant that the 90-degree parking would be, would function, right? So if, if you think the other is better, then.
I just, I was uncertain versus on what Mr. Jacobson had been saying versus what I was looking at.
Right.
So.
Well, that's right. His May 23rd letter, item 2E, he has that, that final sentence.
Okay, I'm okay with it.
All right. And then with regard to this being a special exception application, if there could be an eventual approval, then the Commission would have to list those things which allow it to be approved as a special exception suitable for this location in this district and AM as well. And that includes a determination that the modification of the location of the buildings on-site from two to one building and the resulting non-conformities are more conforming than it was before, and that that's approvable, that the Commission agrees to the proposed 18 parking spaces, 12 in front, six in the back, and that the existing front porch or covered, covered front porch is going to be eliminated, then the Commission is okay with there not being a sidewalk to the single front door according to the proposed plans. That the Commission is it's going, it would require the applicant to move all the stuff out of the, the item, existing items at the rear of the building and the location where the six gravel parking spaces are shown to be located, that that be cleaned out and getting rid of all the old fuel tanks, old wood pallets, furniture, window screens, and dumpster. They have to be out or located where the dumpster is shown on the new plans. And that they, do we have a copy of the easement? To the state, to the state that Mr. Jacobson specified?
Yes.
Right. So we have item number three, that would also be a condition of approval. And then as Mr. Royston noted this evening, that a condition of approval would, regarding the fact that the building does not meet minimum elevation for NAVD 88 in the corner of the building, including the basement, that the applicant would submit an application to FEMA or a letter of map amendment to exclude the existing building from being located in that special hazard, special flood hazard area. All right. Any other ideas on conditions or stipulations if this is going to go forward this evening? None appearing? Now make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Jerry Lewis seconded the motion to close the public hearing for Old Glory at 1804 Boston Post Road. Any, any discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? All in favor of closing the public hearing for Old Glory, 1804 Boston Post Road, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries unanimously. You wish to deliberate on this this evening?
Yes.
Yes.
Do that? No need for additional information. All right, with the previously specified items or conditions or stipulations for approval, then I'll make a motion to approve the application for a special exception and coastal site plan review for Old Glory at 1804 Boston Post Road, map assessment map 17 Lot 4, gateway business peaceway district and coastal area management zone with the following conditions, that the resulting non-conformities are less non-conforming than what's existing and that they're acceptable to the Commission. The parking, as shown on the plans, will be perpendicular to the front of the building and a total of 18 parking spaces are to be provided as according to the plan. There are the walkway between the front of the parking spaces and the front of the building is not required in order to provide turning space, access space for vehicles, and safety for pedestrians on-site. The combination of no sidewalk and perpendicular parking keeps the vehicles from backing into the right-of-way. All right, then the rear of the building will be cleaned up where the six new park, the six parking spaces are shown at the rear of the building. We have a copy of the easement clarifications. That's part of this approval. And that the applicant will submit an application to FEMA for a letter of map amendment regarding the existing building and the special flood hazard area. Any other conditions or stipulations? None, as there is second to this motion to approve?
Second. This is not a CAM, is it?
Yes.
Oh, so do you have to use the CAM language? You have to use the CAM?
Yes.
Read the CAM language.
Yes, the CAM, yes. Oh, yeah, those require a CAM. All right. We have the motion to include the statement that this project is approved as submitted and amended because it is consistent with all applicable coastal policy. include the statement that this project is approved as submitted and amended because it is consistent with all applicable coastal policies and makes all reasonable efforts to mitigate adverse impacts.
And I'll second that again.
Secondly amended motion. Thank you, Jerry Lewis. All right. Any discussion on the motion? None appearing. All those in favor of the motion to approve with conditions as listed, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. No opposed, no abstaining. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is, uh, new business, Hartford Healthcare minor modifications with special exception permit to allow for sign with five of your colors in non-conformity with section sixty-four point five point eight, part A six at two fifteen Elm Street, that's our search map, thirty-eight lot two in the industrial high district. Owner, two fifteen Elm Street LLC, applicant Hartford Healthcare agent Tracy Becker, sign through. I see Tracy Becker online.
Yes. Good evening. Um, I, I believe you have our application. Um, if you'd like me to share my screen, I'll be happy to do so.
Well, we had, we, earlier in our packets, we had the first three pages, uh, four, four pages. And, uh, and beyond that, I have lighting cut sheets. And this is. All right, direction signs.
Yeah. Then. Can I just give you brief explanations?
All right. So this evening I have, I have more than I have had previously. So some of this is new. So yeah, if you would, uh, um, I would say at this point, if the dimensions are correct of the signs, the, the important fact is that the ARB has some.
So we have two things kind of tonight, so I want to kind of dissect. The first thing is that this application is in front of you tonight. The special exception is for the new December twenty twenty-two regulation that limits the number of, of colors on sign. So the freestanding sign with the Hartford Healthcare logo has more than the sign, the colors of the sign, or sign colors that is allowed under the current regulation. The second thing is that this became a little confusing and I just kind of defer this to the zoning commission because the original approval for Hartford Healthcare was done under the previous regulations. So the original approval was based on the old regulations and ARB had a number of concerns with that. So I don't know, Tracy, if you want to kind of jump in and talk about the first portion of this, um, or Tracy and I worked on some compromises um, before the previous application went to ARB because there's been the regulation changes in between. So the first, I guess, would be the freestanding sign probably that we would need to discuss and address. So I'm kind of coaching you because this became confusing. Complicated, confusing.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate that. Um, so can you see my screen? Hopefully I'm sharing the monument sign. Okay, so, um, the issue here is that we are allowed to have four colors and with the Hartford Healthcare logo, um, it amounts to six colors. Um, so we would like your permission to use all six colors, um, with the understanding that, um, you know, four of the colors are very, um, small in the logo, uh, with the white background and black lettering um, and the magenta base, which is one of the brand colors for Hartford Healthcare. So that is our first item of business. Um, if you would, uh, if you have any questions about that or, um, you know, it, it, this is their branding, you know, their typical branding. So we would like to get that approved, please.
So this is, do we have a picture of what the original approval was?
There was no tenant at the time.
Right.
Originally.
Right. So was there a sign application approved?
Let's keep freestanding signs separate. This is.
Well, according to our regulations, an approval of a special exception site plan is supposed to include sign applications. Applicants historically seem to have forgotten that part of the requirement.
So at the time when you had your original approval, there was no tenant and it was medical office.
Right. I understand. No tenant, but.
There was a location of the sign.
A location was shown, but this, there was no description of signage for that location as part of that.
Original approval. There was a freestanding sign location. Do you agree with me, Tracy? I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Um, so I think you're talking about the original approval from the owner, correct? But before Hartford Healthcare was involved. Is that right?
Correct.
I believe that is correct. It has some, it has some very basic placeholder items. I don't believe there were any details about the freestanding sign.
It was a placeholder.
It was a.
It was a placeholder. The sign was not.
Right.
Proposed. It was just a location.
Just a location. Right. So there was no sign approved under the old regulations. This is.
No, so let's go back. There was no freestanding sign details for the first.
Application. Correct. That's what I'm getting. There was a location approval only. There, there was no signage design approved, including dimensions at that time. Right? Just a location. We, we had regulations regarding the height and the size and, and other aspects of the signage, but they were not part of the approval, correct?
The discussion was.
Location was all.
The discussion was that when the tenant, when the applicant found the tenant, that they would come back. So at the time, the regulations allowed for the freestanding sign for multiple colors. This sign has more colors than the regulations allow under the new regulations, which trips a special curve.
Right. And since the location was all that was approved in the previous special exception approval process, there was no approval of internal illumination, was there?
I have to go pull the file.
No, there was.
But there was a modification following the first application. This is where it gets very confusing, where the tenant did suspect that Hartford Healthcare was going to be the tenant.
Right.
And then there were signs proposed, but Hartford Healthcare was going to come back for the freestanding sign.
Right. And was, was an application made?
So the applicant did go to Architecture Review Board with the first renditions of the signs.
Yeah.
That's when Tracy got involved prior. So first application, Hartford Healthcare was not involved with the approval from this commission.
Right.
Second application was Architecture Review Board and there was a building modification. At that time, there were signs shown for Hartford Healthcare. This is very confusing.
Which regulations were in effect?
The old regulations. This was all prior to December of twenty twenty-two. This is where the confusion begins.
So, and that was approved once Hartford Healthcare?
Hartford Healthcare was going to come back.
Well, no, no, and I must stick to the question. Your question is, was the modification of the original approval?
Yes.
Including Hartford Healthcare's, um, words on a sign, that was approved?
The concept, yes.
Right. And so at that time, the ad approval allowed for colors that may not be applicable today. Let's just clarify that. Was approved sign under the old regulations within the limits of the old regulations?
The, the old regulations did not limit color. So now they're coming in.
Was it within the other regulations regarding the sign?
Yes.
Okay.
So now they're coming in for a special exception now that they've changed the design to exactly what Hartford Healthcare would like. And because the regulation allows it limits colors, the regulation says the freestanding sign is coming to you for the modification of the special exception.
Is that the only difference in the sign regarding the regulations colors?
I'm going to defer to Tracy.
Right.
I'm going to defer to Tracy because.
I'm asking with regard to other features like internally illuminated signage and ground coverage at the base of the sign. I know we've had ground coverage at the base of freestanding signs in the old regulations as well. And I don't, I don't, I don't see anything pertaining to ground cover, to, um, vegetative ground cover coverage at the base of this sign and this rectangular thing that goes down to within, what, what's that, one point seven inches? On that purple rectangle there? I don't understand how this, this sign could comply with the landscaping ground coverage required.
It's on the cross.
So on, on our original proposal, we had a much larger sign that met the previous regulations. With change in regulations, we agreed to make the sign smaller so the eight-foot overall height matches the new regulation. We are using external illumination, uh, from the top of the sign, and I do believe the lighting information that you have has been updated based on our discussions with the Architecture Review Board. So I'm, this page that I'm sharing now shows an external light from the top of the sign and it shines down, um, each side of the sign. So there is no internal illumination. It's all external illumination. Um, if you need plantings or some other, I mean, right now it's just sitting in the grass or where we have it marked out is just in the grass. If you need some sort of a planting bed or mulch with some small shrubs or something, I'm sure that, um, Hartford Healthcare can accommodate that. We wouldn't be doing that because we are not landscapers.
Okay.
So to go to the May twenty-second, twenty twenty-three minutes, the ARB made a motion for conditional approval of the option of the monument sign. Pending zoning approval for the colored option for with the sky compliant light and motion in support of the color option. So the previous approved sign was larger and met the old regulation. The regulations were changed in December of twenty twenty-two. The current sign, and Tracy, jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. The current sign is smaller. It's externally illuminated. It's dark sky compliant. And the reason it's here in front of you tonight is because of the number of colors on the sign. And it's a more conforming sign than what you were per.
Correct. You are correct.
Okay. So the number from the ARB.
So that's what I just read from the ARB. I just want to kind of keep this in parts because we can make this really, really confusing quickly.
What do you say about the colors?
So your new regulations that you adopted, they approve of the colors pending zoning commission approving the special exception, which is required for the additional colors.
So they're okay with it if we, if we're okay with it?
The freestanding sign, correct.
The colors.
Yes.
Looking at the May twenty-second letter from ARB, they're, they're meeting minutes. And they have four motions in total. The first one has to do with the ground-mounted monument sign.
That's what I just read.
They mentioned, uh, conditional.
Chris just read that.
Of either option. And so we have.
So I, I want to break this down. ARB did not complete their approval.
Right.
Tonight was just going to be the freestanding sign. So the other motions, I want to break it down one by one.
Right.
So ARB did not approve the entire application and continued it. From their conditional approval, they approved the monuments.
Right.
In order for them to get a permit for just the monument sign, which was the only discussion tonight, the applicant applied for a special permit for the additional colors on the sign, which is more conforming than the previous sign that was approved prior to the December twenty twenty-two regulation.
Yes.
So we are only considering the monument sign at this point.
Right now, it's on the monument sign. Correct.
Yes. So that's the first discussion. Okay?
Right. And the ARB has a conditional approval of monument sign for one of, of conditions. And the condition, we have the exterior illumination, dark sky compliant, right?
And that's what Tracy just showed, the top bounded, dark sky compliant light. So that's in your revised plan for the special exception. And then I want to go over some other issues after, but we'll, we'll go from that.
The, the wishes of the ARB appear to me to have been fulfilled by the applicant switching to what is now proposed. Okay. The next motion of the ARB's minutes has to do with.
Let's break it down again. If we're done, are we done talking about the freestanding sign?
The freestanding sign, my only concern is that it still complies with the landscaping at the base of the sign. Would we make that a condition of approval? When we get, if we get to it. Right.
All right. Tracy, do you have the previous? The window approval?
Um, I do. Yep. Give me one second to just swap this. Okay.
So there was an approved site plan that there was a modification to the site plan. And at that time, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tracy, or the applicants here as well, those calculations were for, were based on the previously approved application.
Correct.
And at the time, there was a window sign, sign that met the previous regulation. Now the regulation requires a smaller logo because the regulations became stricter. The applicant wishes to go forward with the previous sign size, which was approved. Tracy, anything to add?
No. We are good.
ARB was looking for that to be reduced. However, they have a previous approval for the size of the sign from the modification from prior to December of twenty twenty-two.
That's a little square, there will be.
So see the window on the right?
This portion here.
The colors doesn't matter because it's in the white and blacks. It's a work on the same.
Let's not confuse me anymore.
This is the window sign.
Yes.
Right. And the ARB's minutes.
And the ARB with would have preferred the signs to have been smaller. But you, the applicant already has an approved sign size. But you, the applicant already has an approved sign size and we can't regulate content.
Ultimately approved this sixteen square foot sign. Um, with the understanding that it is just vinyl on the window and it is not an illuminated sign that was originally approved at sixteen square feet, so it's, um, it's less non-conforming, I suppose.
So the previous sign was internally illuminated?
Yeah.
This proposal is to keep the sixteen square feet, but not to have the internal illumination which was previously approved, which makes it more conforming with the current regulation that's in place today.
Right.
Yeah.
This sign is proposed on a window. We have regulations regarding window signs. And it, and this meets the dimensional regulations and square foot limitations regarding window signs, correct?
For the previous, according to the previously approved site plan modification under the old regulation. The applicant no longer is proposing the internal illumination, which is no longer permitted.
Correct.
So they're reducing the non, what is a new non-conformity. They're gonna have the same sized sign, but it's not gonna be illuminating.
Right, but this is some form of signage, color, color display on glass.
And it met the previous.
And the glass has an interior side and the interior side of the glass might have lights on. So it functions as if it were internally illuminated. It's just not, the illumination is not limited to the square footage of the sign area. But the net result is you have a sign on a window with lights on the inside that light up the sign.
Well, that's for any window sign in town.
Right, okay, but I'm just saying, my point is that if the square footage allocated for this sign and the previously approved special exception, and now it's being modified such, uh, in a way such that it's less non-conforming to the new regulations, then I see in the minutes, the motion from the ARB meeting is to recommend approval of the window sign as presented. So I think we're done with the window sign.
Correct.
Yeah.
All right, two more motions in this, in their minutes. One has to do with directional signs.
I can show you that.
And that was the directional sign. They approved the directional sign. And that one meets the regulation. The reason we, the other discussion that was had is that the ARB did not like the design of the Hartford GI sign because it was a little too colored and not legible.
Oh, just a second, we, we've already checked off that the ARB recommends approval of directional signs.
Yes.
Right, so we've got three things done.
Right.
So now we're down to the crux of the matter with regard to the ARB's um, minutes where they prefer to continue the internally illuminated wall signs. And we, I received a letter from the ARB discussing some of their concerns with wall signs. So that's, that's the item to be discussed, okay?
So the one thing that the ARB had an issue with the, well, first of all, Hartford Healthcare and Connecticut GI are two separate businesses, so there's two wall signs. The ARB had an issue because there's a lot of activity with the sign, with the intestine, the lettering, there's a lot of, it's busy, that was their issue. The sign meets the dimensional regulations. And the applicant for Connecticut GI would like to keep that and does not want to return to ARB to change their logo, even though ARB feels it's too busy. Tracy, do I have that right?
You have that correct, I mean, this is Connecticut GI's logo, they are unwilling to change it.
Okay, so the the ARB has had, uh, from the initial application for this modification from that date, the ARB has had opportunities to weigh in. And the way I see it, they did not um, give us a direct recommendation in favor of or opposed to the internally illuminated wall signs, they were hoping to continue the discussion.
So the, the issue is that the applicant does not want to change their sign, design and logo, which is content. So it really made no sense to send them back to ARB because it's been pretty clear by the ARB that they do not, they do not like the sign. So the reason I brought it to the commission tonight is that it just makes sense, rather than send the applicant back to ARB
Bring it here.
To bring it here.
Right.
So that there's not a discussion of they, they're not pleased with the sign because it's busy, so.
So does ARB not like the entire sign or the GI portion of the sign?
Well, there's two signs. They definitely do not like the GI.
But the Hartford Healthcare sign?
They, they were very happy with the Hartford Healthcare sign.
And the applicant wants both, from what I'm hearing.
Well, there are two different tenants and each one is using their branding and their logo, so yes, we would like to get both of these internally illuminated signs approved as presented here.
So there was suggestions at the ARB meeting, just gonna run through their minutes. Um, that the GI aligned sign is not legible, it could be dangerous for someone driving on the highway. And further, the signs give a frontage road look. It was mentioned that the signs are just for highway and not for the drivers off of ninety-five. There was suggested to enlarge the Hartford Healthcare sign and take out the GI sign. However, they're two different businesses, so.
But yet there's no GI mention on the previously discussed either directional signs or the streets.
Because they're not proposed.
Okay, so the only identity of GI is proposed on the front of the building?
It's actually the side of the building, but yes.
The sign.
Where did, where did I see the, I don't have, I can't seem to find the letter in hard copy in front of me, from the ARB regarding their concerns about the, the appearance of the sign, the aesthetic qualities and their goal was to try to have a consistent appearance of signs, a bustle table, and that um, in their opinion, this particular sign um, was, was, it's not meeting that goal.
And, and their biggest concern was that the logo has a stomach in it, so that's where we, you know, I guess we've agreed to disagree on the content of the sign and you know, here we are.
Well, I, I saw something from the ARB which mentioned that.
It's in the minutes.
Bob, it's in the minutes in here, right around the minute. It's in the minutes, just right around.
Oh, it's on the back of the thing, oh, okay.
Unusual placement, alright, then, uh, yeah, their, their concerns regarding the appearance of the sign are, are.
Do you want me to read them in?
They're, they're not. Yeah, they're not exactly measurable in terms of dimensions and location, size or height. They're more regarding the aesthetics of the sign and they, uh, Emily Wachowski said that the signs do not meet the qualitative aspects of the regulations. Specifically, the signs do not complement the architecture or the other signs. And the, the board members all agree that the building signs do not work together and create visual clutter. That the, I'm looking at your side, your elevation here showing the, uh, the side of the building which would be visible from the highway. And I see two distinctly separate signs. It looks like that there's two different functions associated with this building according to the signage there.
That is correct. These are two separate tenants within this building.
Right, and they're two separate things are obviously two separate things because there's no coherence, there's, there's, there's nothing integrated between those two on this wall of the building, and I think that's what the ARB was looking for. It's kind of a, a theme to be portrayed on this side of the building highly visible from I ninety-five with regard to impressions of Old Tabor, and the applicant may well be within the applicant's rights to propose such signage, but it's not in, uh, in, in, not in harmony with what the ARB would like to have as, uh, an appearance of signage in Old Tabor, so.
I understand that. My, my concern with that is that this qualitative factor that you're stating is very, um, subjective. And when the makeup of the Architecture Review Board changes in a couple of years and, and you know, the subjective nature of that regulation would lead to different um, findings with a different board. So that's my concern with, I understand what they don't like and what they're ultimately requesting. And our direction from Connecticut GI is that this is their logo, this is what they need their sign to be.
Right.
So.
The ARB has its designated assignment of interpreting architecture and the total package of appearances.
I understand.
The zoning commission.
And, and they are an advisory board if I am correct.
You're correct.
Okay.
Right, and, and in, in, and in their comments, they actually do say that, uh, or one of the signs could be on the cupola, and to that I say, no, it could not because the cupola is above the roof line and we do not allow. Above the roof, so.
Right.
The ARB does its thing and the zoning commission does its thing. And we take a, advice and we give it all due consideration and yet we have to go by the regulations.
So the two.
I understand.
The two signs meet the regulation. The issue is that.
It's not aesthetically pleasing to the ARB, basically.
Pretty basically, yes, that's right, Mark. Which is ridiculous. It's their logo and then who, who's gonna change their logo?
Yeah.
And they shouldn't have to.
No, it's, you, the sign regulations do not control content. The zoning commission is not authorized to control content of a sign. Size, height, location, and we do our best with guidance from the ARB to get a good result regarding the appearance overall in light of what Old Tabor would like to project as its own self-image. If the applicant doesn't want to participate in that, they can still do that. And yet, if they comply with the regulations, the zoning commission is in a position to um, specify why, uh, a, a modification to a special exception site plan would not be approvable. And in this case, it appears that, um, there's nothing to stand on to say that it's not approvable because we don't like the logo.
Correct.
All right, so in that regard, with due respect to the ARB, trying as they, as they might, uh, their advisory and the zoning commission's um, powers here are, are, are limited. And in that sense, then, uh, I, I will make a motion to approve the minor modification to the special exception.
All right, actually, no public hearing, I'm sorry.
No.
We talked about special exceptions so much, my public hearing radar goes off.
So I, I actually think we've handled the special exception portion of it because that just had to do with the colors of the freestanding sign. And then the additional piece is now to approve the entire package as a whole. As, Chris?
Well, now we raise the question. Why is this not a modification, why is a modification to a special exception not a special exception review? Because this is the minor modification?
Well, you're, so the difference between minor and major is you're not adding or decreasing building coverage, you're not changing landscaping or parking.
So it's a minor.
Right.
Yes, in section fifty-two, number thirteen. Well, we do that, well. I can't go there, I can't go there. Alright, so where's?
Last portion of section.
Fifty-one thirteen, yeah, fifty-one thirteen, I'm sorry, fifty-one thirteen. Minor modifications to an approved site plan, that's a site plan. So is this a minor modification to an approved site plan that was part of the special exception application and approval?
Well.
Yes.
They both start the same.
Uh, maybe approved by the commissioner delegated to the ZEO for approval or provided or, or, or the amendment to not alter the overall character, quality, density or intensity, uses amenities, parking or other major features of a site plan as approved. So it's up to the commission then to determine if these modifications alter the overall character, quality, char- character or quality. Well, from what was approved previously, it doesn't alter the overall character. It alters some, some character, but we know that we can't regulate character.
Right.
Alright, so, uh, it's not a major amendment because major amendments include but are not limited to significant alteration in the square footage or location of landscape areas, any alteration in residential density, any increase in building floor area or height, or any other alteration which significantly affects the overall character, quality, density or intensity, uses amenities, parking or other major features of a site plan. So it's signs are changed based on the occupant. And it changes, the sign changes. Not part of the overall character of the architecture and site layout and landscaping, it's still the sign. Alright, then I'm back to, I'll make a motion to approve my, the Hartford Healthcare minor modification to a special exception permit to allow for the signs with five or more colors and signage as included in the application be, tonight.
Six.
Second, Mark Delmonico. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Jury, aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright. Next up on the agenda is Gorgiano, an application for special exception use and coastal site plan review to construct a one thousand eight hundred eighty square foot three car garage and house addition, a one hundred forty-seven square foot front porch and one hundred thirty-six square foot back porch to an existing residence for a total proposed nine thousand seven hundred twenty-eight square feet at thirty-eight Watts Point roadmap sixty-four, about seventeen dash eight in the residence AA three district and coastal area management zone and Connecticut River Gateway. in the residence, A A three district and coastal area management zone and Connecticut River Gateway Conservation Zone. Applicant Agnes and Cosmo Corrigliano, event Joe Ren. Mr. Ren online.
Good evening. Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Nice to see everyone. Um, actually, in the audience are the Corriglianos. Uh, and, uh, Brooke Erdy, who is a project architect, uh, I decided to stay back in the office with the earlier application and then I thought it'd be best to share these, uh, images, uh, with you. Um, so to get started, uh, the site is thirty-eight Watchers Point Road, uh, in Old Saybrook. I have the G I S map up, uh, on the screen here so you can see the, the general location and it's, um, relative proximity to the river. Um, you can see that Watchers Point Road is here and then there is a long driveway to the existing house. Uh, that's in this location with an in-ground pool here. Uh, there is an existing one-story carport garage, uh, right in this location uh, with a circular driveway, uh, and then a shed over in this area. If I, uh, switch the share, bring up the survey. Um, this survey, uh, that we have and used as a base plan was, uh, done by, uh, Angus McDonald uh, back in two thousand and five and it shows, um, the existing house. Uh, shows the circular driveway and the shed, all of that is still the same. Uh, shows this, uh, carport slash garage in this location. And at the time, they were proposing the pool in some grading uh, back here. They did get those approvals. At the time, the pool has all been installed and it's currently uh, in existing condition, as you saw uh, in the, in the G I S map, which is here, you can see the, the pool and the building, carport, everything similar to that, um, to that survey. Um, the river obviously is along this location. You can see there's some, uh, shoreline beach area there. And on our, uh, site plan, you can see the, um, let me just change the share. You could see when I pull this up. We've added the, um, the offset lines, uh, from the resources. So this line here is the hundred-foot Connecticut River Gateway Conservation Zone setback and the riparian buffer uh, from the coastal resources. And you could see that the proposed improvements which are here are, are outside of that line.
What line is that?
Uh, that's the one hundred-foot gateway, uh, Connecticut River Gateway Conservation Zone setback.
And, is that the riparian buffer?
And the riparian buffer, yes.
Um, so where is, where is the line from which the riparian buffer at hundred feet is measured?
Uh, so this line here as we have uh, so the river is back here and then there is a beach and a shoreline uh, that we show on our plan. The original plan went from the edge of the river.
That's shoreline. Where, where is the coastal jurisdiction line? The regulations require that a surveyor would mark the coastal jurisdiction line. So somewhere on there, there's supposed to be a surveyor determine coastal jurisdiction line. Is that, is that that, uh, dark wiggly line to the right of the pretty straight dotted line?
That's this line here and it's labeled as such. Um, there.
Jurisdiction, yeah. Yeah, the coastal jurisdiction, that's a coastal jurisdiction line. So where do, where do I find on this plan, the line that shows the hundred-foot riparian buffer from the coastal jurisdiction line landward? I don't see that. I see a hundred-foot line from the, some line having to do with the Connecticut River, but that's irrelevant. Because the riparian buffer is measured from the coastal jurisdiction line. And where would that one hundred line foot, uh, one hundred feet of riparian buffer go?
Going back to the original survey, when the pool was approved on a coastal area management in Canker River Gateway Plan, that was measured from the, the edge of the river, uh, on that survey map. If you can see the changed share. So this was the fifty feet here from that line and then we had the hundred feet from that line. So on our map, we went from the shoreline, which is the coastal resource. Um, if there were tidal wetlands, it would be from there. Um, and in this case, it was the, we noticed that there was a, uh, sandy shoreline. So we went from the sandy shoreline and not the river like they did in the original uh, survey map that was approved for similar work closer to the river.
I'm using a scale of one to twenty and a hundred feet from the designated, it says approximate coastal jurisdiction line. And if it were designated by a licensed surveyor as required by our regulations, I, I'm puzzled as to why it says approximate. It should be pretty well determined. But from what it labeled here on the, on the, uh, site plan, approximate coastal jur- jurisdiction line elevation and a three point nine N G V D twenty-nine. A hundred feet from that line goes right through the poststructure between the garage, new proposed garage and the existing house. So the new, newly proposed garage is outside the one hundred-foot riparian buffer. The existing house is existing, that, that's not going to change. But the, what's called the pool house in between the garage and the house is to a large extent within the one hundred-foot riparian buffer. And I find it odd that the Connecticut D E E P would, would would miss that.
Um, there was, there was another approval also recently for a, um, an enclosed porch area in this corner of the house and this, that's never come up before. There were, the past two approvals used the coastal resource, um, not the coastal jurisdiction line, um. Chris, is that the definition of the riparian buffer or is it from the coastal resource?
Well, I just noticed something else that your coastal jurisdiction line is elevation three point nine.
That's N G V D twenty-nine, which is a foot higher than N A V D twenty-nine.
So versus, alright, I'm just clarifying.
Is that, is N G V D the same as N A V D eighty-eight?
It's about a foot higher. Uh, the reason why that this plan is N G V D twenty-nine is because that's what the, uh, survey was done in on that datum and the conversion is about one foot less, one point zero feet. So three point nine would be equivalent to two point nine N A V D eighty-eight.
Alright, so what I see on the site plan is a line that's labeled the coastal jurisdiction line, C J L. And I can read in our regulations in section fifty-two, Ops fifty-eight, sorry, the riparian buffer area. It's one hundred feet measured in a horizontal plane from any point of the coastal jurisdiction line of the Connecticut River. And in fifty-eight point six, setback, gateway conservation zone. Within the gateway conservation zone, the commission prohibits construction or alteration of any building or structure within less than a hundred feet measured in a horizontal plane from any point of the coastal jurisdiction line of the Connecticut River or any of its tributaries or its associated wetlands or to the most landward extent of the title wetland boundary, whichever is located most landward. And so the the commission, this commission, the Old Saybrook zoning commission prohibits construction or alteration within a hundred feet. And that would include the part that's called the pool house. It does not include the three-car garage, new construction. It does not include the previously existing, now non-conforming existing house. But it does include what, what's called the pool house or the smaller of the new proposed rectangles between the garage and the existing house. So the commission cannot, it cannot approve that pool house. So the options that you have before you this evening are to allow the commission to modify this special exception application to approve the new garage and not approve the pool house. Or you could withdraw or modify your application. But the pool house as shown is not approvable. It's prohibited.
Is that?
Yeah.
The riparian buffer line is shown on the map. The coastal jurisdiction line. Is it? You want to see that, but this it doesn't, it doesn't look through the, unless I read it.
It doesn't look through the map. It goes, it's got a scale.
No, it really, if you look at the, you know, on the map, it shows that it doesn't go through the garage or the board.
On, on this map, yes.
Is it run?
There, there's a, there's a the, the right ghost word on the map. They, one hundred-foot Connecticut River Gateway Conservation Zone setback and one hundred-foot gateway riparian buffer. Yes, but that line is mislabeled. So that, the, I'm sorry, that description and that resulting setback line drawn on this map are drawn from the wrong reference point. They are drawn from a line which is labeled the approximate limits of beach slash river shoreline. That is not the same thing as the otherwise labeled
Catcher.
approximate coastal jurisdiction line. The regulations are to observe one hundred-foot setback from the C J L. Thomas Moran, you have, you have a couple of options. Uh, how do you wish to proceed?
Um, the, I just heard from the client and, um, they don't want the garage without the attachment to the house, but uh, I think what you're saying is that um, you would be able to discuss the garage now because that is beyond the measured hundred feet from that coastal jurisdiction line as shown. Uh, but not the pool house because that would require a variance uh, through zoning.
You can try, but the regulations say it's prohibited. And the D B A, well, it's, they do their thing, but you, you could, you could apply for a variance, but this commission cannot approve what is prohibited.
We, um, we've done rebuilds of houses within a hundred feet of coastal resources before and gotten, uh, variances and then came to this board for the special exception over thirty-five hundred square feet before. Uh, and that was successful. Um, so I'm not sure why, uh, why this wouldn't be in the same why this, it wouldn't work for this particular project, um.
Well, it, it's up to the applicant to determine if it's feasible and prudent to locate a new construction outside the hundred-foot riparian buffer setback. And if it is, then that's where it should be.
Um, so the, the applicant is there. I just wanted to explain that to them so they know their options. Um, so they are there and they could answer that directly for you.
Now, I think the first question we have is, are we absolutely certain that we're within that hundred border line? You can't, you can't alter the building or construct new.
I get that, right. I thought on the chart, it does say that we are, we're outside of the hundred-foot limitation, the garage.
So let me, so let me clarify if I may. So Cosmo, um, in the past, the past two projects that you did, two thousand and five, and then the other one from a few years ago, um, both were in that line and it was shown similar to what's on this plan. Actually, the two thousand and five plan showed the buffer from the edge of the river. Um, this one goes further and shows it to the coastal resource, which is the, um, the sandy beach area, uh, which is landward of the river. Um, so being more conservative than that survey, that's what this particular plan shows. Um, what, what Mr. Friedman is saying, that the definition reads that that one hundred-foot riparian buffer should be measured from the coastal jurisdiction line?
No. No, it's previously existed.
They're having a separate conversation, so hold, hold your comments. Put the map, so they're done, just ready for you. They're not hearing anything.
So, one hundred feet from that line is even. So you could have a connection from the garage to the house, but you can't have.
Okay, John.
So, so John?
Okay, so the riparian buffer, uh, as Mr. Friedman just clarified, is to be measured from that coastal jurisdiction line. The past projects you did was measured from the coastal resource and, you know, went through um, the approval process those two separate times. But as the definition reads or now reads, it's from the coastal jurisdiction line, which is quite a bit um, based on the elevations you have from your survey, it's quite a bit landward of the coastal resource, which is a little unusual. Sometimes the coastal jurisdiction line more or less follows the resource. In this, in this particular situation, it's landward of the resource, which is the shoreline. So um, that one hundred-foot buffer, um, based on that definition is to be measured from that coastal jurisdiction line, which is this line more or less on the plan rather than this line. And by doing that, it puts the pool house uh, in the back, uh, deck area within that one hundred feet from that line. Um, this particular portion, the garage and the front porch, I believe are measured, uh, to be outside of the hundred-foot area. Um, so they could proceed with those two pieces, but not the, any part that is within one hundred feet of the coastal jurisdiction line.
Well, if, if this commission did that, while these regulations have been in effect and it aired in the past and it's not obligated to air again and the regulation fifty-eight point six has a section of fifty-eight point six point one for exceptions. And this is not one of those exceptions.
Correct. I was just explaining to the applicant the differences in the, uh, the buffer areas. Um, so do you, um, do you guys understand that? That difference?
We do now, yes, thank you.
Okay, so the question on the table is you could proceed with the pieces outside of the hundred-foot area, which is the porch and the garage, but not the connection in between at, at least this point in time. Um, if you were able to obtain a variance, that's been done recently as well, within a hundred feet, since the whole house is within a hundred feet already. Um, if you were able to obtain the variance, then you could come back to this board for the special exception. Um, but the pieces that are within a hundred feet of that coastal jurisdiction line, um, and you could have the coastal jurisdiction line field, uh, field verified by a surveyor too. You know, maybe it is closer to the river than shown on this plan. Um, the elevations provided on the survey only went down to that, that line. You can see the five-two and the three-nine and the three-four. Uh, and it was interpolated with that elevation because it's based on elevation. Um, so that can be field verified and to see if more of it is out of the hundred feet as well. So those basically are the options that you have at this point. Um, so, so to proceed with parts of it or to not proceed, withdraw and then come back, uh, in the future.
I, I, I think this consensus among all three of us here, including Brooke, is that we should wait. Uh, reconfirm the line and then make changes if changes are necessary and then come back.
Okay.
With regards to the garage, we've got, uh, an act, an access way through the garage from, from the part which is prohibited. So there would have to be some modifications. This is going to have approval by this commission, but it's back through the the garage. The slab on grade, uh, that would be, uh, Uh, that would be, uh. This is the, the coast foundation plan of April twentieth, twenty twenty three. Page A zero. They have, there's a. An area of label garage slab on grade. That's what that works. And then, uh. The next page A dash one. Shows a new garage and it has a. A door, it has three garage doors and it has two other human access doors. Those could be approved. Um. As part of this application. But none of the. Rust labeled pool house. Or three fab sauna or staircase. There's a staircase in that proposed pool house leading to. On page A two. A labeled guest bedroom with a bath. Above the garage. And so the. The staircase would be subject to different regulations and, uh. I'm not sure, I guess I'd have to look and see if you could even put a staircase in a hundred foot repair and buffer. There may, there may be some allowance for that, but. The guest bathroom, um. You'd have to measure, so you'd have to measure if that's within a hundred foot because if, if that's close. The guest bathroom. Maybe within a hundred foot buffer, that's not for me to determine. Uh, but it's close. And then the, um. Staircase, if there was a staircase. To gain access to the. Upper level guest bedroom over the garage, there would have to be a different means of access. That's not on this plan, so. We have to revise the plan for the garage to be approved.
Yeah, I think, I think the owner just said that they, they choose to withdraw. Um, confirm the coastal jurisdiction line, exact elevation with the land surveyor and then, um, come back.
So our, our hope, um. We're going to work towards getting all that done so that we hope you can be on the agenda for the next meeting. If that, if we're hoping that we can get all that work done, um, where we can be on the agenda for your next meeting.
Okay. All right.
So you're going to continue the public hearing to June.
The, uh.
Joe.
Next, next regularly scheduled meeting is Wednesday, June twenty.
Joe.
Yes.
Do you think it's feasible to have? This revised by next week? That would be next day for the package.
So let me just explain one more thing to them, um. We would have to, you, you would have to get a surveyor out there to confirm the line, show the location. Now, if the proposed improvements are still within the hundred feet or partially within. Then Brooke would have to modify the plan to be outside of the one hundred feet. To not require a variance. Your, your other option is to. Withdraw from zoning, try to go to Z B A, try to get a variance, come back to zoning later on. That obviously takes more time. If you were able to design everything outside the one hundred foot buffer. Um, then we could come directly back to zoning. That's, we would have to get everything in in one. Week, basically a week from today, right, Chris?
It would actually be Wednesday because of the Juneteenth holiday.
Okay.
Um, but the thought would be, would it make more sense to continue it to the July third meeting?
July third.
Yes.
Or we can continue it and see how you make out and you can always request to continue again.
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's do that because I know that they are anxious to, um. To get started and from our end, from my end, I know that we can do that and meet a date. I'm not sure. Uh, Brooke is there too. I'm not sure how much reconfiguring she would have to do moving that. Uh, in a different direction, uh, but from our end, I know that we would be able to do it. So, um. Let's do that. I think that's a good idea. Let's continue it to the next meeting with the hope of. Getting that line as accurate as we can and trying to get the improvements outside of the one hundred foot and then proceed from there.
So what's the deadline for the July third?
Well, well, no, so, so Joe, I don't think you could hear Brooke. Cause she was saying she thinks she could do that. So what, what would happen is you would continue the application. To the next meeting and if you don't have enough time.
Then we continue it again.
To the July third and you can always ask, you can always ask for an extension of the timeline of the public hearing to keep it open, to give you enough time if you can't make it work for July third. Then you keep it moving along.
Right.
So, right, so we can do that, we can do that step line.
So Brooke, we, Brooke, we'd have to get everything to town hall for, um, June fourteenth. One week before their next meeting of June twenty first. We'll try that and if that's not feasible, then we will ask for continuance to the July third meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll make a motion to continue the public hearing. For Caliglio, for Regaliano, the application for special exception use and coastal site plan at. Thirty eight Waters Point Road. To our next regularly scheduled meeting of Wednesday, June twenty first, twenty twenty three at seven P M. Town Hall first, second floor conference room, Main Street, three or two Main Street Old Saybrook.
Second.
By Mark Delmonico, any discussion? All in favor of the motion to continue this application to Wednesday, June twenty first? Signified by saying aye.
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 Gary's five zero zero, see you then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, public hearings, Max's Place LLC and Big Y Foods Incorporated, deficient. To amend the Old Saybrook zoning regulations to amend section fifty three point one. Standards for motor vehicle uses to reduce the separation distance requirement. For fuel to five hundred feet in the gateway business B four shopping center district. Applicant Max's Place LLC and Big Y Foods Incorporated, using attorney David Royston. Mr. Royston.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the, uh, commission. Um. This, uh, regulation. Um, the text of the regulation. Uh, is relatively simple. It changes the, uh, separation distance in your special standards. Between gas pumps. From one thousand feet. To five hundred feet. Um, and in the text, that really is all it's doing. Uh, you may recall that in, uh, uh, March, we came in with, um. Essentially two petitions, one which reduce, uh, eliminated. Separation distances entirely. That was disapproved by the, uh, uh, planning commission and was denied by this commission. The second petition. Was a reduction. Similar to this, a reduction from a thousand to five hundred feet. Um, but with a proviso that, uh, if you were going to have gas pumps, you would add. Uh, E V chargies, charging stations on a two to one, uh, basis. Um. There was, uh, considerable discussion, um, uh, the, um, planning commission rec, uh. Recommended against having, um, E V charging stations as part of it. Um, and they, uh, there was some discussion, uh, between the, uh, members of the commission. Um, and ultimately the, uh, zoning enforcement officer. Uh, recommended that we withdraw. The application for the five hundred foot separation distant, distance and refile. Because of notice, uh, uh, issues. That we have done. And as I say, the text. Reduces it. From a thousand. To five hundred feet. In those districts. Where, um, retail sale of gasoline, uh, is permitted. And it is permitted in the B four. And in the, uh, B two. Those are the only two districts. Um, in which motor vehicle fueling station, um, is, uh, permitted. So in this regulation. Uh, effectively, it is only, uh, available in the B two. And the B four. You have received, uh, recommendation, uh, from the planning commission. And the planning commission, um, uh, approved this, um. Uh, this amendment. As being consistent with plan of conservation and development. And, uh, they, uh, made a, a recommendation. That it be limited to the B four. Um, you have received, uh, I'll call it, uh, no objection from, uh, the river cog. Uh, no objection, uh, from the, uh, gateway conservation, uh, district. And, um, they, uh. Those letters, um, indicate that, uh, that they feel that, um. Um, it, it's fine in the B four. The last time. They recommended just, just limit it to the B four. The applicant has no. Objection. If you wish to limit it to the, uh, to the B four. Uh, and, um. I think this is, uh, uh, a, uh. A valid, uh. Limitation, um, um. Of five hundred feet because I think that is, um, supportable. Uh, where I don't think a thousand feet hits. And again, uh, all the, um, reviewers, uh, have, uh. Uh, no issue, uh, with this. And, uh, uh, it seems to me the recommendation is that it be, uh. Uh, in the B four only and that's, that's fine. The. Uh, I submitted for the record and it was, uh, because I couldn't hand it to you. Um, uh, you may have, uh, the letters that were, uh, submitted by Big Y. And by, uh, Chief Spear up on the, uh, previous, uh, application. And I simply highlighted. Uh, those statements which still apply here. Under. The Big Y letter. They basically say on the second page. Providing a motor vehicle. Fueling station is an important inducement for visitors to a shopping center to not just obtain gasoline, but also to visit. Other tenants of the shopping center. We consider those so important. That our current Big Y grocery store model is to include gasoline sales on the same site. When feasible. We believe the proposed amendments are in. The best economic interest of Old Saybrook. Um. Chief Spear in his letter of April, uh, second. Simply says the department supports the proposed revisions to the zoning regulations. That pertain to fueling stations, gasoline stations. This is the important part, specifically. The abolishment of the archaic regulatory requirements of stations to have a one thousand foot. Separation, uh, distance from each other. This action would benefit. Our entire community, members of Old Saybrook residents and service populations in our local. Um. So, um. This is a, uh, bare bone, simply reducing it from a thousand to five hundred. Uh, and if you, um, wish to make it, uh. Applicable only to the B four district, that's fine. Uh, I'm here prepared to answer any questions you, uh, you have. I'm not sure, uh. Uh, Ron Lyman indicated that, uh, he would be coming and I do see that he's in the, uh, uh, audience, uh, also. But this essentially is, uh, uh, basically our, um. Presentation. You've heard a lot of this before, so, um, this time it is, uh, really a very simple regulation. And, uh, the recommendation is that, uh, it be approved for the B four district.
All right, Ms. Lyman, any, any, uh, statements regarding this application?
Um, just to say that, uh, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak for a moment. I think Dave was going to have this job of presenting my, uh, our position, their wise condition in mind. Um, I certainly, uh, um, on this end of town or the Max's Place end of town is really, uh, one gas station. Uh, it's really underserved in comparison to the other areas of town and, uh. Uh, yes, there used to be more gas stations, uh, years ago. There were far less pumps. I mean. It, in the way, things have, you know, we're, we're, this is the way the public seems to like, uh, like, uh, things to be, you know, where, uh. There are, uh, a, a, a few, a few, enough gas stations with adequate, uh, uh, you know, uh, uh. Fuel dispensaries and of course, as you know, we're more than willing to do E V also. It would be really nice to, uh, uh, uh. Clean up the Flanagan property, which is frankly in a, a very, uh, you know, state of disrepair. Uh, I own the land around it and, uh, uh, and, and I'm certainly, uh, have, I have a, an arrangement with Big Y where we would demolish the building and, and blend it in and. And make something that looks, you know, we, we want to make this whole quarter, uh, look nice and we certainly appreciate it. It's very important. For Big Y's business model, uh, they're, you know, in order to be competitive as a private company and, and so on, they really have to, uh. Have this, uh, as an additional inducement, as, as Dave said, to help bring customers in the door and, uh. Uh, I know, uh, my wife, for example, uh, wishes it was there because she, every once in a while she spooks down to, uh. Clinton where she can get in, in, uh, a Stop and Shop and she really doesn't want to shop there, but you know. Uh, I, I don't want to tell the divorce that, but once in a while she spooks down here. We certainly did retire her shopping at Big Y and I think it is a plus. Uh, for certainly, uh, Old Saybrook to enhance Big Y. Um, I made a commitment to, uh, uh, the community, if you will, when they wanted to take some, uh, some pressure off of Big, uh. Uh, Stop and Shop's parking lot and certainly, uh, maybe it would become more competitive. It's, it's, it certainly has helped consumer all the way around. So I would hope that you would consider. Uh, uh, adopting this regulation because they're certainly a very good corporate citizen, Big Y, and, uh. I think it's, it's very important to them and their business model and, and they, I think, certainly have been a very good addition to the community. Uh, and we certainly are very much in favor of any, uh, you know, um. Uh, architectural things that might be necessary, uh, but we, we make their craft, we can't even get to, get to, uh, get to that point without at least this regulation change. So. We certainly would appreciate your consideration and, uh, approval of the regulation change and thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Okay, Stop and Shop in Old Saybrook is in, in the B two district, which the planning commission recommended against including in this modification. Mr. Royston, the planning commission's letter regarding that, uh, leaving out the B two district was May nineteenth. Do we have a copy of, uh? The proposed text change regarding limiting the separation distance to the B four district?
Uh. No, Mr. Chairman, but that is an amendment. That if the commission, uh, felt that was appropriate, uh, uh, the commission could make. Um. I, I think that's an option and it's up to the commission if it wishes to, uh. Accept that recommendation. One of the things which I did before making filing the application, I did check. With your counsel to be sure that the commission could make such a limitation without there being a, uh. A notice requirement and essentially, um. As was stated the last meeting. Uh. If you make it more restrictive. That's, um, fine because it doesn't involve a notice problem. If you try to expand something to, uh, for example, to put this into the, uh, marine commercial districts, there would be a, a notice problem. So. Suffice it to say, uh, we'd be delighted to have the commission, um, uh, approve the restriction. Uh, in the, uh, uh, in the B four district only.
So if it if it modifications to the regulation were made to limit. Motor vehicle uh the this the distance at at five hundred feet instead of a thousand feet. In the B two district, Stop and Shop is located adjacent, abutting. Uh another property which is an approved gas station already. So a modification regarding Stop and Shop, as Mr. Lyman mentioned, and a gas station. Would not impact the viability of a gas station close to Stop and Shop in the B two district. Just because this regulation would allow a shorter separation distance only in the B four, because that. Gas station is previously existing. It's one of set one of three that I recall are previously approved and yet not today functioning as gas stations. That would also include the Minniki gas station. Oh wait, there's four. There's the Minniki gas station, the mobile station across from Mystic Market. There's a charisma car wash down by Springbrook Road that has an existing approval for a gas station. But not currently operating as one. And wait, there's five. The former Cumberland Farms, Tuthers Market, that blighted property across from Whole Foods. Uh so we have five gas stations on the books that are not presently operating. Maybe a reflection of the demand for gas stations. But it might also mean that tomorrow we could have five more gas stations in Old Stabrook. Simply by uh reviving the old approvals. Oh wait, the there were other gas stations as well, there was a gas station at the head of Main Street where the Chamber of Commerce is now. So that would be, we used to have six more gas stations. There was a gas station at where Duncan is at one sixty-six and Route one, where the Solomar Cafe displaced the former gas station. That was seven gas stations we used to have that we no longer have. So at present, we're down to six operational gas stations. Food Bag, and well, whatever its new name is, Atlantic something, two Hennessy's. Chucky's, sorry, Sam's, um. The Cumberland Farms formerly BP Mercury Irving gas station, which was approved under. Unusual conditions, let's say, but it's it's there. And um there's a classic carriage car wash, Mr. Pitlick's Station uh by Mariners Way. And and there's um. I think that's the the six that we have operational today. So we have six. Westbrook doesn't have six, Clinton doesn't have six, Essex doesn't have six, Old Lime does not have six. There's a Big Y in Old Lime, they don't have a gas station. There's a Big Y in Clinton, they don't have a big, they don't have a gas station. So in Old Stabrook, we have more gas stations than any other town nearby. Deep River, uh Chester, uh so the push for additional gas stations seems to be counter to the trend. And to the automotive future with electric vehicles. And the legislation pushed towards transit oriented development to get people out of their cars. So the drive for additional gas stations seems to be something regarding the past. And each additional gas station becomes a a source for volatile organic compounds released to the air. At every action of opening and clo- and and moving around the petroleum products. And so there's a lot of reasons why additional gas stations are maybe not the best thing. So. In this, in 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 those regards, um I see there's concern about more gas stations. Uh and in the proposed text, it adds or repeats the words fuel filling devices. Is that intended to include electric charging for electric vehicles, E V charging stations? Are electrons considered the fuel in this case?
That is the commission's language and it's not our language.
Correct.
Therefore, it would be.
You repeated it, so I'm I'm bringing it up because you chose to repeat those words.
Because those are the words that are in the regulations.
Right, how is, what is your interpretation since you chose to repeat those words?
My interpretation, it would be what the commission's interpretation was when it adopted it. And if, is my recollection uh correct? That it was uh the chair uh who may have went at those regulations were adopted. And remember, we didn't participate in the quote cleanup of the automotive use and the. Vehicle regulations when they were adopted. Um but I believe that the uh chair uh thought that it ought to be. Um uh the interpretation ought to be sufficient for other type of. Motor vehicle fuels uh fueling. That it should not be simply gasoline. That's my recollection, that that was of your reasoning uh when that uh regulation was adopted. So if I'm correct and that's what you say, that's what you thought, then that's my interpretation.
In a in a previous round, be it a preliminary discussion to an event. Uh eventual application or even a subsequent application, one of more than one. The intent was to include fuel filling devices which transferred liquids of some form. From a pump into vehicles, be it propane or hydrogen. And at the time, I did not intend for it to include electric vehicle charging stations, which are. Um much less of a a a a traffic generator because it at present takes about twenty minutes to get significant charge. And so the turnover would be less frequent than a a fuel filling station where a liquid is pumped. And so I would say at this point that separation distances do not include electric vehicle charging.
That's, I accept that.
For whoever know, who knows how many vehicles and how much separation, it could be on a lot discreetly located in any place. They don't have to be concentrated the way a a liquid transfer station has to be.
I accept that, I accept that interpretation, Mr. Chairman. The applicant understands and accepts that interpretation and it's meant for transmission of of fuel. It was not intended to have a vehicle charging station uh be included.
All right, any other questions, any comments, anybody online, anybody online? Uh online, anybody raising a hand?
No.
None appearing.
No.
All right, then uh. We have any input from Mr. Royston, I've covered the planning commission. And his present proposal is to limit the text change application to separation distances in the B four district. Based on. It was. The memo report of May nineteen. And the Electric River Gateway Commission has no comment on the application. Other inputs?
So referrals were sent April twenty eighth, you heard from River Cog, Gateway, Planning Commission and Deep.
Right.
And no one else.
Oh, did we have one from Deep? Yes, we did, um. Very.
They really had no.
They had no comment, really, kind of.
Right.
It's it's generally consistent.
Okay. So no further input required and uh no one's uh raising a hand to to participate in any discussion. In favor of or in opposition to. It'll make a motion to close the public hearing regarding Maxis Place LLC and Big Y Foods. To amend the Old Stabrook zoning regulations, break section fifty-three point one, standards for motor vehicle uses. To reduce the separation distance requirement for fueling of vehicles to five hundred feet in. The Gateway Business B four Shopping Center District.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis online. Uh he discussed a motion to close a public hearing, appearing all in favor of closing public hearing, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh motion carries unanimously. Marissa deliberate on this this evening? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. You go forward. Okay, this is a legislative decision, uh not not administrative. And so it's up to the commission members to determine based on public record and their knowledge of the issue. And in this case also, as mentioned, the previous applications in various iterative forms. And come to a decision. In that light, uh I'll make a motion, the chairman, I like to restrict it to the B four district.
Pardon me? Yeah, I would feel that we should restrict it to the B four district.
That be.
We already did say that.
That's where we are.
Okay, you were there, I didn't understand that part, okay.
Yeah, this this application would include restrictions on the separation distances to be reduced only in the B four.
Okay.
All right. Now then then make a motion regarding Maxis Place and Big Y Foods petition. To amend the Old Stabrook zoning regs, section fifty-three point one, standards for motor vehicle uses. To reduce the separation distance requirement for fueling of vehicles, not an E V charging. To. At five hundred feet. Instead of one thousand feet in the B four district.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis. Any discussion on the motion? Did you approve it?
No, we can't.
No. You're done.
Any discussion on motion?
No, I think you wanted clarification, did you want clarification? He's not seated.
He's not seated.
Can't talk.
Here, Jerry's, Jerry's there.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, so all those in favor of the motion to amend section fifty-three point one. Standards for motor vehicle charging stations, motor vehicle fueling stations. To be reduced from one thousand feet to five hundred feet in the B four district, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed saying nay. Nay, nay. You you were.
Aye.
All right, three ayes, two nays, motion carries three to two. Mark Eldorel and Bob Swigman were opposed. Jerry Lewis, Mark DeMonico and Anne Marie Thorson were in favor. Got it? Three in favor.
Yeah.
You got it?
Yeah.
Okay, motion approved.
Thank you very much.
Next standing is Travel Pit Renewals. Dibble, Inham Hill Road, McGruder, Vulcan Road and Lakewood Circle and Paul, Middlesex Turnpike. Thanks, I wasn't aware that Dr. McGruder brought point out.
Last year, last year.
Add two.
Last year, the second.
Oh, last year, I missed that.
So.
Pictures were nice, Chris, thank you. I like the pictures, thanks.
So um I inspected all three gravel pits, I sent you photographs of them, everything seems to be in order.
Yeah.
The gravel pit for Dibble, nine thousand cubic yards in. One thousand out, general activity, regreating, stocking, stockpile maintenance. Um we have plans which I can pass around, I know we did distribute some approximate location of stockpiles. Materials processed and moving equipment is on the site. There does not appear to be any issues. Uh B and L Construction. So from May of twenty twenty-two to April of twenty twenty-three, there was ten thousand nine hundred and thirty cubic yards. And sixteen thousand one hundred and fifteen cubic yards stockpiled and removed. And the McGruder, Mr. McGruder's not exactly sure what he's going to do with his gravel pit. Um but he did have some minor activity there, um and. That also seems to be in order, everyone in order of their ease. You've seen photographs?
Yeah.
We got those by email, thank you.
Yes, very nice.
I have one one question regarding the the letter from B and L Construction of May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. It says the uh total yardage removed. Uh covering May twenty twenty-two to April twenty twenty-three was ten thousand nine hundred thirty cubic yards. And and sixteen thousand one hundred fifteen cubic yards were stockpiled and removed. Does the sixteen thousand one hundred fifteen cubic yards include the ten thousand nine hundred thirty cubic yards, yes or no?
I do not believe it. Ten thousand nine hundred and thirty removed.
And.
Material delivered in stockpile, sixteen thousand one hundred and fifteen cubic yards for the map, so it's different, two two separate.
So there's a net gain of some five thou- you know.
Four thousand.
Five thousand two hundred cubic yards on site. Okay. Because it says the sixteen one one five cubic yards were stockpiled and removed. So if both were removed, the ten and the sixteen, that would be a loss of twenty-seven thousand cubic yards.
Now, one's material delivery in stockpile, sixteen thousand, material removed, ten thousand. And then the map that I believe Joanne put in some of the packets for us to share shows the different locations where those materials were stockpiled. That have been removed.
Okay. I do think they're all good, no complaints, no issues. The photos were.
Yeah, very nice.
Looking looking good. All right. I'll make one motion to permit renew the gravel pit permits permits at all three sites. Inham Hill Road, Vulcan Road, Lakewood Circle and Middlesex Turnpike. Because they uh uh appear to be uh up to date with the required data and fees.
Have been called.
Second.
Collected.
Yeah, is there a second, Jerry, Jerry Lewis seconded the motion. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to renew all the gravel pits in Old Stabrook, those three previously listed, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. No abstentions, no opposed, all right. Workshop on drive-through windows. We have a new input from from Mr. Royston regarding his his comments on our workshop and. Anything anything beyond what we've already received? All right, so with regard to continuing the workshop, what can we, what can we accomplish this evening?
So at the previous meeting, Attorney Royston could not be here. So he is here tonight and I know because the agenda was long, we set some time limitations since it's a workshop. Um so Attorney Royston's here, Ron Lyman is here. Um and we have written comments at this point.
Were we anticipating any more input?
I think Attorney Royston would like to speak this evening. Since he was not able to be here the last week.
Well, we, Mr. Royston submitted written comments, I'm sure he may have something else to offer, but uh. Where I think we're up to date on the comments regarding um the workshop. That phase of our uh drive-through regulation considerations.
So at this point, I have no new texture changes, I figure we get through the workshop pavings.
And Mr. Royston pointed out that he has not, he has yet to find another town other than East Lime. With uh separation distance requirements between drive-throughs and the. Drive-through restaurants were not in the definition of the state uh D O T major traffic generator. drive-through restaurants were not in the definition of the state, uh, DOT major traffic generator. Uh, function, uses. Interesting enough, in Cheshire, one of the major traffic generating uses was a gas station. But that's not a drive-through restaurant. The, uh.
Let's be kind now.
All right, so, um, what do we, we have, we have, I, I just got Mr. Royston's comments. Let's say recently. And so I have to digest, uh, those with regard to how we have progressed to, uh, uh, the draft, and try to merge, meld, incorporate, and, and whatever, so. Um, I don't have, I don't have a due to, to propose to the draft from me this evening. Does anyone else have something?
No.
No. No. All right, so that's, that's my assignment, your assignment for the next workshop is to merge all of the comments with what we had assembled today. And make recommendations for a, 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 an updated draft. And at some point, an updated draft would become a working draft. And then that would become the text for opposed text change public hearing. I think that's where we are now, so we got to do the homework, please. Put things in that, uh, are worthy of being incorporated and cut things out that don't make things better for Old Sabre, so.
David's hand is raised.
What's that, Jerry?
David's hand is raised.
He did it.
He's raising his hand. He wants to talk. Hello? Anybody?
We heard you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, and I raised my hand for that purpose. Uh, the agenda says fifteen minutes. I will, uh, restrict myself to, uh, not more than ten minutes and probably less.
Okay, go.
Go. Um, they, um, uh, in my comments, um, I, uh, uh, had a problem with the, uh, any requirement to limit the number of uh, drive-through windows on a lot regardless of size. I think a legitimate concern is, well, we don't want a proliferation of a number of uh, relatively small drive-through on lots. Uh, but I think this is, uh, saying only one per lot is counterproductive uh, to that because it would induce someone to try to split up the properties for each one of the, the drive-through. A better mechanism, I think, is to, uh, increase the minimum lot size per, uh, drive-through. Uh, that way, uh, if you're going to, uh, have, uh, two drive-throughs, then it's going to be double what the minimum lot size, uh, uh, is. Minimum lot size right now is twenty thousand. You could say, however, for a drive-through window, for one, minimum of forty thousand. Uh, and then anymore, the same increase in the, in the lot size. Uh, the, uh, there are things in your current regulations which work, uh, some of which, uh, do not. One of the ones which is, uh, I bring to your attention is subsection B of your special standards, which talks about, uh, making sure there is a separate lane into the, um, into the drive-through, uh, and that there, uh, is safety to, for pedestrians. I think you should expand that, that the, uh, access to the stacking lane does not, uh, have an impediment to the, uh, the parking circulation in the rest of, on the rest of the lot. Take a look at specifically, I think, the issues relating to, uh, Dunkin'. I think those are site development plan, uh, issues where the lane, not the stacking lane, but the access lane, the access driveways to the shopping center, um, they are, uh, causing, uh, the problem. And so I think your regulations ought to, uh, in- include language about that, the stacking lanes or the access, stacking lanes do not impede other, uh, parts of the shopping center. The, um, also, um, I think they, uh, the regulation ought to be, um, coupled with an increase in the, um, setback from the pedestrian, uh, node. I don't think you should eliminate it, but you should increase it to twenty feet from ten and require that there be a dedicated, um, uh, bicycle lane. Because I think you are likely to get more bicycle traffic than foot traffic. And you do have the opportunity within your site plan regulations to have, uh, bicycle racks uh, on the property. But to allow someone to get there, uh, by bicycle, uh, would be, uh, an enhancement. Uh, and if you increase it to ten, uh, feet, twenty feet, excuse me, um, then you do have room for a sidewalk, for a bicycle lane, and for the, uh, landscaping. Uh, the other, um, uh, items are in my comment, and I'll leave it at that. Uh, except that, um, I don't know if you noticed when you got it, I put on the the ray, it said petition to reduce to five hundred feet. That was an error. Uh, a typographical error on my part. I gave, uh, uh, Chris some, uh, uh, substitute pages to have a correct ray in it. Um, but I thank you for giving me, uh, this opportunity. Um, and I believe I have, uh, kept within, uh, less than ten minutes. Thank you very much.
Anything else, a good? Mr. Royston referenced Westbrook's, uh, drive-through regulations. Take a look at those. They're available online. And, uh, if you've seen a good, a good drive-through that, uh, is laid out in a manner that would achieve what we're hoping to achieve, then note where that is, and we'll see if we can get the regulations that generated that. Dunkin' Drive-Thru, as Mr. Royton pointed out, that here in Old Sabre, Dunkin' and Smithfield Farms, it doesn't function well because the internal circulation pattern has conflicting pathways for vehicles, and it's not really pedestrian-friendly. Uh, there, there's no walkway from the sidewalk directly to the front door, as is required in a pedestrian node and for pedestrians to access the door to the, to the indoor restaurant that it is. They have to cross, uh, unless they're parked right near the building, they have to cross the, the access drive for the drive-through. And if they're parked there, they have to back out through the access drive to the drive-through. That design is, could be better, should be better. So we're, we're thinking along those lines. And it's how to make it work. I have photos from, uh, not too long ago, did it to Seattle where there was a Starbucks drive-through only. Building with only drive-through, no customer access. And there were sixteen stacking spaces on site, all occupied, and I have a photo of three additional vehicles on the street waiting to get into the lot. That's Seattle. That's where Starbucks started. You know, I don't have to go to Quincy to look where Dunkin's starting, but we, because we have a Dunkin' Drive-Thru here, but in Seattle, sixteen stacking spaces for Starbucks was not enough. Another point Mr. Royston has raised is to whether or not a drive-through for food and food service could be a standalone use, or must it be accessory to a restaurant? At present, we have multiple types of restaurants. Some can have drive-through windows. Can you have a drive-through food purchase spot without a restaurant? To me, that's not what Old Sabre is about. Old Sabre is a community with interaction between people that extends beyond the core window. And the regulations are written in such a way, the Gateway Business B4 District is supposed to be a gateway to town, not a, not a pit stop on a highway. And so I'd be more interested in regulations which achieve human interaction outside of motor vehicle. I mean, even a fueling station, you have to get out of your car. When I was a kid, you didn't have to get out of your car. Somebody came out and cleaned your windshield and pumped the gas for you. Or in New Jersey, they, they still do. I don't think they do that. They still do, but it, it's gonna end. But anyway, only in those cases do you not have to get out of your car. Otherwise, it seems like Old, Old Sabre would be a better place if people had to get out of their car. But that's just me. You get to have your own. So put it in, incorporate it, put it in, in a draft and bring your draft mods to the next meeting. Okay.
Just to add to that, so from the previous workshop, there were comments. See, you want me to add those comments before we get into public comment? Try to pull that all together or something for you?
It might help. Yeah, yeah. I think it would help. Okay, anything else? Next, um, any other comments from anybody regarding drive-throughs? No, we're good?
No.
End of it, then staff report. All right, so we had a late email from you regarding music.
So, Alex spoke from Penny Lane. Uh, he gave me a call today and, um, he's having some issues with the lack of amplification. So if he has someone outside who's playing solo and they're sitting in one part of the outdoor seating, people can't hear them on the other part of the outdoor seating. So he's requesting, um.
This, this concern is only with regard to music or outdoor seating, right? Right, because they could have music indoors just fine, but this is out.
So he's requesting that they would be allowed to have music outside between May and August with no more than two musicians on Fridays and Saturdays only, and with minor amplification. The speakers would be placed so as to be facing Main Street. Previous years, they were facing Dudley, and volume would be kept down. We would not allow any bass low-frequency sounds travel further.
The last time I visited, one of the speakers was mounted on the green shed-like building, and, um, it was facing away from Main Street. The other speaker was mounted on a four-by-four post near a cinder block wall with chalk drawings on it, and that speaker was pointed directly at the houses on Dudley. And so our advice to him, when we explained that he could have live music, not amplified outdoors, didn't result yet in repositioning of the speakers in line with what he says in the letter today. There are speakers out there, and they are not aimed toward Main Street.
Are they, are they being used?
Yeah.
Are they being used?
I, that I don't know, but the speakers for out, the speakers for outdoor electronic amplification are already there and not aimed where he.
So, but that, so he's not using them at all. So
Right.
in May, early May, he came to the commission to have outdoor music. There was a trial, the neighbors came out because they were upset um, about the noise from amplification and bass. So the commission granted him kind of a test trial from May through August. And that was with no ampli-, night, with no amplification. So right now, there's no amplification, and the issue is that when people are seated, if the musician is down there and you're eating over here, or sitting over here dining, that you can't hear it, and it's just not, I don't think it's cost-effective because only a portion of the dining patrons can hear the music.
Have you heard from any of the neighbors?
So I received no complaints, and Alex, I asked him today if anyone came over. He said he's received no.
As long as the implication in that area doesn't exceed any other areas, if it's equal to what's being generated by the singer is equal of all quadrants of the, the deck, why wouldn't that be okay? No louder than that being generated by the, um, singer or, or music maker. It generates, generates a level, as long as that's equal, not exceeding that on all four quadrants of the, the deck.
How do you measure that?
Yeah, well.
But he said, I think what he's saying is that.
It's not anything.
With no amplification, nobody can hear the musician, right?
Well, doesn't he have a microphone?
No.
No amplification.
But I'm saying, could, could we allow him to amplify it as long as it didn't exceed what was being produced by the person generating the sound?
Well, I think first of all, I think that the reason that you haven't heard from the neighbors is because he's doing what was agreed to at the zoning meeting a few weeks ago or a month ago. Um, I ate back there, so it's not a big area. So I cannot imagine that they can't hear the person with the guitar or whatever they have without the amplification. Um, it is very, very close to the neighbors' houses. I, I took a look and, and it's not big back there. So, you know, we, we agreed and he agreed not to have any amplification, and now he's coming back. I mean, I think he knew then, when we were talking to him, he agreed. And now all of a sudden, he's not agreeing because why? People are still going in there for dinner and eating outdoors. So I, I don't, you know, I mean, I can appreciate what he's saying, but all those neighbors came and he agreed not to have amplification, so.
So he's reaching out to say that it's not working.
For him.
Well, if it doesn't work, then it doesn't work. It's a, it's a restaurant with outdoor seating.
He's also.
It's not an entertainment venue that serves food.
He's also interested in, into an interpretation as how could we have music on the green in other areas with amplification?
Well, we talked about that too, the last meeting.
So I told him I didn't, I, I would come to the commission for an interpretation as to how you can have music amplified on the green in other areas, but I've never really investigated it.
Didn't we tell, um, a while ago, forget the name of it, that they couldn't have amplification? It's the one that's across from, it's on Boston Coast Road.
Where is it?
Restaurant?
Little Pub? Little Pub, yes. Didn't we tell Little Pub that they couldn't have ampli-, I think we did when we approved their, their application, they couldn't have amplified music outside. We did.
With, with Little Pub.
I'd have to go, I don't remember.
Uh, Little Pub has a little caviar near the, the door on the western side of the building. And we said that they could have outdoor music, but would not have, and not amplify.
Same situations. So the question that I've been asked, and you were asked, is that if that's the case, then why can we have music on the green? And why can neighborhood associations have amplified music? So that there, he's requesting an interpretation.
So, well, that's.
Talked about that.
Little Pub's in a B3 district, but at a box residential, and B3 can have single family residents in the B3 zone. And so it's, B3 is where it's even more sensitive than the B1, a budding residence. We also approved outdoor non-amplified live music for the host restaurant with affordable units above and across from the Stop and Shop and access drive, the drive in, in where Hogwild used to be. Anyway.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Anyway, so we already have three instances of approving outdoor live music, non-amplifier. And if it doesn't work for him, then it's not working for him, but because that's not what he wants. But in terms of a zoning commission authority to regulate land uses, we don't regulate music. We regulate whether or not there can be music in a location. And we're doing that to be respectful of the neighboring residential in mo-, in the three cases that I can think of. Three, three residential. residential in the three cases that I can think of, three residential butters. And that does not include amplified music. I would also be concerned about other kinds of music, which over the course of repetition, people might object to. And the best example I can come up with would be kettle drums. You could have steel drums out there and that noise could carry quite a distance. But we don't get into regulating instruments, regulating volume or noise. Regulations say it's not supposed to cross the property line. I don't want to get into arguing about calibrating decibel meters and beat frequency and things like that. That's not zoning. Zoning is you either allow it and you embrace the results or you don't allow it and you live with the limitations. And the people who live next door, in my opinion, would rather have it that way. Once you open the door, it's hard to close the door.
Yeah.
Does he have the ability to challenge the town putting on music on the green?
Well, he's asking, he's asking the question that if the commission's taking the standpoint that he can't have outdoor music, how can we have outdoor music on the green with Sheffield Street and other residential activities and in, you know, neighborhood areas and other places? How is that allowed? But typically, that's always been deferred that it has to meet the town noise ordinance.
Now we're gonna have butt words. Well, I know how it can be done, but it's, if he can't do it because of cost at this point, then he can't do it on the end where it can be done because it costs way too much. There's a restaurant in Berkeley, California that was opened by somebody who made a killing in the dot-com stuff a long time ago. He put in his restaurant eight hundred mini speakers. So the volume is really, really low, but you can hear it everywhere because there's eight hundred speakers in the restaurant. Not practical, but it can be done. So I don't want to have to get into regulating the number of speakers and the volume and all. That's not land use. And so if somebody says they can't, they want it, but they can't do it, I don't care how nice they are or how wonderful their restaurant is. No. Live music, no amplification, that as far as it goes.
How do we respond to the other?
It's a good restaurant. Shouldn't need music.
The other question is then how do we allow music on the beach and music on the green? Because that's, he's gonna ask that question next. It already came up. And I don't, I don't know what to say to them.
But we already talked about that at that meeting.
So what was the interpretation of how it was allowed? No one came to that conclusion. Nobody really talked about it. So that's where the question.
And that's once a month. I don't know. All I know is what we decided.
Our legal counsel about that? Just getting his opinion.
I didn't hear her.
She said we could ask our attorney.
Oh.
From a business perspective, it would be wise for him to challenge that.
No.
He wouldn't look very.
He's just asking the question. I don't think he's challenging it. He's asking.
Well, we already discussed it, so I don't know.
It's kind of.
Well, you haven't, it hasn't been applied to that.
Well, that's, okay, that's the question.
Comes out of Park and Rec. And comes out of this election.
Let him go to Park and Rec and talk to them. I don't know.
But from the zoning commission's perspective, discussions relative to amplification has been no amplification. And there's past history that supports that that has come in front of the commission.
That's true.
Has been insistent with that approach. Yeah. Have you ever been to a gathering of people for wedding reception or something like that where there's been like a three-piece combo that wanders around from table to table and then they can stay in their in a platform area and play there or wander them? They don't have any amplification. They don't need it. There's a way to do it, but if it doesn't work for them because of whatever, that's, that's not zoning. That's, it didn't work in your business model for what you were hoping to achieve. Not a zoning issue.
Yeah. All right, so just to move along. Joanne's helping me write thirty-plus sign violation reminders to that violation notices, I just kind of say, we sent you a letter, we tried to notify you.
Refunds.
Signs, yeah. So we're starting that. June twenty-first, because of the Juneteenth holiday, we're gonna be meeting on a Wednesday, which is the same Wednesday as the planning commission. And that's their first night of public hearing on the plan of conservation and development. So I kind of need to be at that meeting, but hopefully I can. If things go smoothly, I can kind of jump between meetings. I'll be in the building. At this point, the only thing you would have is the continued application for tonight. Prigliano. If they're ready, and then it would be drive-through workshop. Unless something else comes in. So another thing is the Little Pub has in the back, they have acres of land back there and they asked him to fence off an area and rather than mow the lawn, they'd like to get a goat.
What do you want? The area for for goat?
Why do they want a goat? They're gonna serve goat milk.
Goat or two, I think it'll be ten or fifteen kids or people.
Sticking on animals in a B-three district to a restaurant.
It wouldn't have to mow the lawn.
Take a look and see if I can find that in the regulations.
I don't think you're gonna find it.
No, I mean, it's. I don't.
I'm sure there's lots of things that lots of kids would like, but I don't know that in a B-three restricted business district at a restaurant is necessarily the best idea.
Well, they have acres and acres of land and they have another lot, so that was their thought was to go for is kind of an agricultural use.
The land is occupied with all those animals back there.
I don't think it's, I just think it's kind of a neat thing that they want to have. So is that anything you're objecting to? And we do allow for farms and animals as a right.
Yeah, but is that a farm?
They also have a separate lot. I guess that's where I'm going with it.
So it's a separate lot. It's not attached to a little.
They have multiple.
So have multiple lots that are not.
That's my understanding, yes. I don't think it's for cutting to, I just think they think it'll be kind of a neat thing, you know, naturally take care of mowing.
We'll need a barn.
More lawn.
At some point, yeah.
So they won't just have one goat. It'll be lonely, so they're probably gonna have more. Oh, it's getting late.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is that can the goat be handled administratively? It's not gonna be near the kitchen. It's not gonna be near.
Is the goat allowed?
Well, we allow for agriculture in all of our stuff.
Then you almost have to.
Well, how many is he gonna have?
He's got the acreage. I think he just wants one or two. He'll eat some kind of a little house.
Once upon a time, there were two rabbits.
Yes, I got that.
Yeah, I think at some point, I think they're gonna want and want.
You got more rabbits than I do.
I think you can handle it administratively.
And their accessory house.
And then when you come back in and say, now there's five goats.
You're gonna have to come back anyway to modify. I think they're gonna modify their special exception for the outdoor seating, so.
Okay. All right.
Or some changes that. Bad beans. Seriously, so when
That was the book.
So seriously, they were under construction for the Little Pub. The owner took a beekeeping way in the back.
Yeah.
Is it on a separate property? I mean, it's on a separate.
Yes.
It was there, so he kept himself busy. That's where, you know, there has Little Pub honey that's from because they raise it way in the back away from people so they don't get stung.
Hopefully away from the goat.
It's gonna attract bears.
And moles.
Okay, it's time to go home now.
Well, what did we say?
I think you said, yeah, but. Yes.
I said, I recommend.
Handle it administratively.
Everybody agree with that? We can handle it administratively?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Do you need more guidance?
I, I think I can figure it out. I mean, they'll have the acreage and they have that kind of silly area in the back. I think that's all I have unless you have something for me.
Nothing. Motion to adjourn.
What took this so long?
I'll second Jerry's motion to adjourn. All in favor?
All right.